I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's the School District of Waukesha's full board meeting on July 8th, 2015. We'll start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Always a good way to start the meeting, especially when we just got done celebrating the independence of our nation from England back in 1776, the first year. It's always a blessing to be in this country, and I hope everyone had a chance to celebrate that this weekend and spend some time with friends and family. Sue, will you please call the roll?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brzing.
Here.
Steve Edlund.
Here.
Ellen Langill.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
And Joseph Como.
Here. Ellen is excused. She's actually in Europe at this time. Sue, has the meeting been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
And typically, we start out with bright lights, but we do not have a bright lights presentation tonight. We'll move right on to recognitions. Joe Cook. Joe, you have a very special person introduced tonight, the new Director of Special Education for Secondary.
I have the privilege of introducing Jason Gahan to the board tonight. You approved his hire last month. Jason comes to us with a background as a school psychologist for 12 years and a director of pupil services in a smaller district along Lake Michigan, Cedar Grove, Belgium. He's been with us now for a week. He's contributing to the conversations. He's brought a lot to our team already. Look forward to working with him. If you'd come up and say a few words.
Welcome, Jason.
Thank you. Like Joe said, I'm from Port Washington. I've been in education for about 14 years. Love working with kids every single day. I'm privileged to be here in Waukesha, and I'm excited to work with a dynamic leadership team.
Welcome to the district. I heard Joe say that you're not shy. That's a good thing. We need all the good ideas injected that we can, and I think you'll find it's a great team to be working with.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Moving on, student representatives. We don't have reports from them during the summer, and so we'll move right into our citizen, a chance to hear from our citizens. As it has been past practice, we limit each person to three minutes to speak, and at the two and a half minute mark, Barbara Brzing will give a signal that you have 30 seconds remaining, and we'd appreciate it if you wind up your comments in that time. We expect all speakers to honor the time limit, to refrain from inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker, and the Board of Education refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that would detract from our meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phones at this time. And we do have one person signed up to speak, and that's Mr. Reese. Mr. Reese, would you come forward, please?
Hi. Talk a little bit. Last month, you talked about homework a little bit, and it's kind of a point of contention with me, and I wanted to comment on it. At about an hour and 52 minutes and 30 seconds into the tape, Mr. Gray said something to quote. He said, "You could get a good grade for doing stuff as opposed to learning things," as talking about doing homework. So you could get a good grade for doing stuff as opposed to learning things, implying that doing homework wasn't really a part of learning. It's not. It's doing stuff, and you're getting grades for it. But then again, doing tests are not a part of learning either. They're judging what you've learned. They're not learning. They're just taking a look at what you've learned. So then, 30 seconds later, almost 40 seconds later, at 1 hour 53 minutes and nine seconds into it, he said, talking about, he's talked to a lot of teachers, and he said, "If you don't do it," meaning homework, "you're not going to square well on the test." So apparently, homework really isn't just doing stuff. It's part of learning, because within 30 seconds, he completely contradicts himself. So I just have a big problem with that, that it is an essential part of learning, and it's important, and so not all kids do well on tests. And to say that all kids, well, they were able to do well by passing, by doing their homework and not doing well on tests, doesn't really mean something, because you're admitting that it's part of learning, because if you don't do it, you're not going to learn. So the question comes to me is where this came from, why this is, why this grading homework, why we got away from it? And years, when I was in school even, teachers were given about, they gave them two hours of prep time a day to do work, because they're so overburdened with things like homework. Well, not when they don't have to grade it anymore. What are they doing with their two hours? You know? Why do they still have these two hours? So if they're not going to grade the tests, then why still have the two hours? How much money would we save if we're not going to grade things and take one of the hours away? It perplexes me that if the reason for doing it, and the union fought to get these hours of prep time, was to do work that they needed to do, like grade tests and grade homework, well, if we're not grading homework, what's the point? Why have these hours? You know? I don't understand why they fought for something, and then they take it away, and then now they have less to do, or why? Because we admit that it's an essential part of learning here, but apparently, it just really doesn't matter to the school district.
30 seconds.
And that's a lot of the reason why my kid's going to go to private school, where it matters, where what she does, she'll be held accountable for all aspects of her learning, not just parts of it. And it's not just going to be busy work, as was stated last month. And it just really, the cavalier attitude that some have about learning in some aspects of this, you know? We changed the name of Grading for Learning to Waukesha Learning, so we're putting new lipstick on the same pig and just changing a few aspects of it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come up and comment to the board tonight? Anyone who didn't sign up? Okay. Moving on to our minute approval. There are three minutes that are, that do require approval this evening. We had on June 10th a regular board meeting. June 10th, we had an executive session. And then June 25th, we also had another executive session. Do I have a motion to that extent?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Brzing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion?
I just have a question.
Yes, Bill.
I see laying on our desk, we have another copy of the June.
There was some corrections.
This is the corrected version?
Do you remember what the corrections were, Sue?
Well, the computer autocorrected the HSA, changed it to HAS.
I hate when the computer thinks it's smarter than us, eh? All right, any other discussion? Sue, will you call the roll?
Barbara Brzing.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Steve Edlund.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue. Moving on to our communications, Superintendent Gray.
No correspondence this evening.
Okay. And we'll also hear from Mrs. Brzing on an update on the Waukesha Education Foundation.
I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you. Registration for the July 20th Waukesha Education Foundation, Bob Duckett Golf Auditing, has reached 100 participants. We're very, very excited about that. As I mentioned last month, there is still an opportunity to register for the dinner-only option for those who would like to support the Waukesha Education Foundation, but do not golf. We are also grateful for the many sponsors whose generous contributions help support this event. This year, there are 20 businesses and individual sponsorships, which we will recognize at the event and on the WEF website. Plans for the October 25th Celebration of Excellence are moving forward, so mark your calendar so that you can be there to help celebrate all of the different projects that WEF has funded for our teachers and students. We are pleased to announce that Dan Verakis will serve as our Master of Ceremonies that day. In addition to the opportunity to visit with students and staff to learn about the grants, special recognition will be given to the recipients of Lifetime Excellence in Education Awards, Community Partners in Education, and Corporate Partners in Education. The 2015 award recipients will be announced in the near future, following nominations and collaboration with district leaders and staff. Other program highlights will be shared over the next several months as details are concerned. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Brzing. I do believe for the golf outing on the 20th, I think there's room for two more foursomes, so if anybody's interested, head out to the waukeshaeducationfoundation.org website, and you can still get in. So it looks like it's going to be a real good success.
Very successful.
Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Moving on to our Safety Committee report given by Mr. Baumgart.
Safety Committee did not meet in the month of July and may meet in the month of August if some situations have arisen over the summer.
Okay. And want to roll right into the charter school?
Almost equally as brief on that, we have one thing to report. Last week of June, we had a combined Governance Board meeting for the Health Academy, the Engineering Academy, and the STEM Academy. The combined governance boards of these schools met to address issues related to the need for an ongoing collaboration and communication between the three schools. These were constructive discussions about personalized learning, project-based instruction, the roles of administration, staff, the governance boards, and the school board. Hopefully, this will generate follow-up plans and strategies from this meeting, and we'll be reporting on any of that in the future. That's all I have.
Was that the first meeting like that, Bill?
That I'm aware of, yes.
Yeah, I.
I think it is, because it grew out of the fact that, you know, we've tried to enhance and improve the governance boards of the schools, and not that they were bad, but you know, they were growing. And to introduce the boards to some of the learning processes that we're trying to use with these schools, Ryan presented a good glance of how we go about doing that, using his Beehive approach, whatever you call that, you know, with all the.
Honeycomb.
Honeycomb approach, yeah. Equally as confusing, no matter what you call it. And received pretty good response to that and generated a lot of good questions and some challenges, but a good thing. I think it was the first one, and I doubt if it'll be the last one. I mean, it really was a positive meeting.
It seems to make sense that those groups should be together, but they're all about personalized learning, so.
Right.
Each have, take a little bit different angle at it, but that's where I think the power can come in, sharing what's been their successes and to help each other out, so that's good news.
Good.
Thank you, Bill.
That's all I have.
Moving on to the consent agenda this evening. Todd, do we have any public gifts to report on?
Yes, we have a couple. A total of 3,000 was donated to Les Paul Middle School from Paul and Kathleen Ohman and the Northwestern Matching Funds. This money will be used to integrate technology, science, and math into the classrooms. In Waukesha, South Core 2062 Robotics Team received two donations, 500 from the InSync erator Division of Emerson Electric, and 500 from Cheryl Cement of Interstate Seal and Concrete.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. Your agenda includes various categories for approval. There were no expulsions, and if any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration at this time, please so indicate. Okay, seeing none. I'll have Mr. Steve Edlund present the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of 18 resignations, one leave of absence, and 41 new contracts. This information is provided in your packets, and an addendum was placed on your desk. Additionally, the committee approved of one final notice of partial layoff due to the reduction of Title I funding. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Baumgart. Discussion?
Good question.
Mr. Brian?
Ms. Hestram? Excuse my not understanding, but a level-two teacher and a level-three teacher, what is that within the STEM program? Could you explain that?
There are some schools that are multi-age, so a level-one teacher would be a K-1.
Okay.
Level-two is a grade-two, three.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call.
Steve Edlund.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Barbara Brzing.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
And Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue. Moving on to the Superintendent's report, Mr. Gray.
Next week, you have some information at your desk, but the July Institute kicks off. The 4K through eighth-grade literacy program goes from July 13th to 15th, and that, the time of the day is 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and that is at the Country Springs Ballroom. We need that size of a building, because we have almost all our teachers in those grade levels attending that particular program. The K-12 Specialist Programs, Music, PER, Business Ed, World Language, and so on, occurs again on July 13th through the 15th, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and that is located at North High School. And finally, the K-12 Math Institute is also July 13th through the 15th, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Horning Middle School. And all board members are welcome and encouraged to attend one or all the days if you possibly can.
Looks like a lot packed in there.
Yeah, there is. State budget is proceeding. The other day, the Senate approved their version of the budget. The Assembly is working on it today. They wanted to be done by 11:00 p.m. tonight, however, there was a bomb scare at the Capitol today, and they lost about two, two and a half hours. They had to leave the building, have it searched, and apparently now they're back in session. So we're really hopeful that they will get that done as soon as possible, so we can determine where we're going to be with our final aid numbers. Speaking of aid, you know, we've lost a fair amount of general aid, equalized aid. Waukesha County had the highest loss, combined loss, in the entire state at over $11 million. The next highest-loss county was Dane at a little bit over $3 million. We had the third-highest loss in the state, I believe, at 2.6 million. I believe Wabatoosa and Verona were right around the $3 million range. So I don't know what it is about Waukesha County, but all the districts pretty much took a pretty big hit. You know, and as bad as ours was, Kettle Moraine lost almost $2 million, and they're considerably smaller there, so that has to be very painful. Now, I am hearing that once final budgets are approved, those numbers will change, so I don't want anyone to worry that property tax rates are going to go out of sight, because we're being told by legislators that once this budget is approved without any vetoes, so to speak, in the aid area, that things will be looking much better. But that's where we're at today, and that's the recent budget that was, budget draft was using these particular numbers, because we don't have anything better to go on. So hopefully, that'll, we'll know in about another week or two where things are at. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Now it's time to have our committees report out, and we'll start with the Technology Committee given by Mr. McCaffrey.
I have no report this evening.
Moving on to Finance and Facilities, given by Mr. O'Brien.
That came up fast.
I think this is, could be a record time here.
Well, we have three action items tonight. First action item is the approval of the 2014-2015 Budget Transfers and Amendments. The committee was updated on the status of the 2014-15 Budget Changes for Approval per Section 65.90, Subchapter 5 of Wisconsin Statutes. Discussion was held regarding the purpose of various transfers and revisions. Administration was directed by the committee to reduce expenditures in the General Fund by $600,000 in surplus funds currently aligned under the Facilities Improvement Budget, included under the administration, under the Business Administration function. The committee approved the 2014-15 Budget Transfers and Amendments as modified with a reduction of $600,000 from the General Fund Service Building Expenditures Budget, and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. McCaffrey?
I would like to add an amendment to the motion.
We need a second from someone else to make an amendment.
Yeah, you can't second and then make an amendment. Right?
Generally speaking.
We need somebody else to second it?
Second it.
Second the initial motion?
Yeah, second the initial motion.
Second.
Second by Ms. Madden?
Okay.
Mr. McCaffrey?
There was, the one presented at committee had one missing transfer, which would be on the sheet that's on your desk.
You have that. Yeah, there was, the operating transfers, it was only $5,500 and $4,496 respectively, but the auditor will want to see that, even that little amount, they'll want to make sure that that was approved. So the first page is what was approved, that FNF, and the second page is what it should look like.
Okay. So that's your amendment?
Yes.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Second by Karen Reinacek? Okay, discussion on the amendment?
Just real quick.
Mr. Brian?
Just to clarify, the operating transfers line was left out of the original one completely, right?
Correct. That is correct.
So it amounted to a change of, a net change of $1,051.
Right.
Okay. But we need to be accurate for accountants.
Yeah.
They don't like a penny missing.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Edlund?
I have to have my memory refreshed here. We had discussed the $600,000 that was, that was proposed to be used in the maintenance budget to fund projects that would be started in the 15-16 school year. Did we?
Yeah, we'll get back, we'll get back to that. Let's just discuss the amendment first, or is it germane to, is it tied to this?
It can wait.
It is, but I have the answer for that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're looking at the amendment for the $5,500 for operating transfers on the second page, back page here. Any further discussion or questions on that particular item? Okay, Sue, let's take a roll call vote on the amendment to add the $5,500 to the operating transfers.
Okay. Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brzing.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Steve Edlund.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes, Sue, eight zero. Now back to the initial motion, Mr. Edlund?
Yes, we had discussed, again, $600,000 that was in surplus in certain funds and was proposed by administration. We put into, to pre-fund projects, because our budget year ends at the end of June.
Right.
And so the idea administration wanted to do was use that $600,000 that was surplus in the budget to fund construction projects that would have actually began in the 15-16 school year. And FNF had discussed that quite a bit and said we would prefer that if you put that in a different bucket. So I want to make sure that that had changed.
That's not changed on here yet, but it was an amendment, approved amendment, so we do not need to bring that forward tonight. But I mean, before this is published, that will be changed, because that was the original approval from.
That is part of the motion.
It is part of the motion, right.
Okay.
The $600,000 is in the motion.
Okay, all right. Yeah. So I want to be sure. So, but once that motion is made and approved, then it will be changed here, and it will be corrected before it's published.
Very good. Thank you.
Other discussion or questions on? Okay. So we're voting on the amended initial, the amended motion, which includes the $5,500 for operating transfer and approval of the transfers and amendments that was presented in the initial motion, including the $600,000 reduction that comes out of the special projects for the summer. We're clear on that? Okay.
I can reread the motion if you want.
Sure.
Okay. Committee approved the 2014-15 Budget Transfers and Amendments as modified with a reduction of $600,000 from the General Fund Service Building Expenditure Budget, and it's been amended to include the 100 line item.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Kurt. So we're clear. Sue, call the roll.
All right. Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Barbara Brzing.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Steve Edlund.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue. Kurt?
Our second action item was the approval of Copy Print Environment RFP. The committee was updated on the results of an RFP for Copy Print Scan Devices, which was issued on May 2015. Four proposals were received, two of which did not meet requirements of the RFP. James Imaging submitted a proposal which best meets the needs of the district out of the two candidates that were left standing. The committee approved James Imaging Systems to provide the Copy Print Scan Devices and related service throughout the district for a period of five years, and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Edlund? Discussion? Mr. Edlund?
For those of us that don't work in IT, I'd tell you, it sure is, I think, one of the very best finds that we've had in this district is Mr. Schulman, because he's been able to find efficiencies and integrate technology into different educational programs that we have within the district, and not only to make it seem seamless, but he's energetic in finding new and innovative ways to improve on things that we have and have had in the past. So I learned an awful lot about print technology by his presentation, and the way that it's used in automating the systems and reducing overhead in a business is just, it's good to hear it from somebody who really knows what they're talking about. So I was amazed, and I think this is a great recommendation.
Mr. Brian?
Well, I think the motion leaves a little detail lacking, and probably the full board should know a few of the details. Rate, monthly rates double. It was, it's up to about $24,000. The monthly rate's doubled, but the intent is to remove as much personal printing as we can from, throughout the district, and go to more of a centralized printing resource. And in addition to saving probably a significant amount of money in terms of supplies and support for those, all those printers, we'll save on paper with random prints being left places and things like that. Right now, they'll have a card that they can scan at the printer, and then they select when they're at the printer, what they want printed from their account. So it's not going to have this random abandoned prints all over the district. So the idea to recover that doubling monthly cost means we have to probably be more diligent in policing the use of these personal printers throughout the district. In other words, try to discourage their use. And some of the issues we talked about was maybe actually charging per print on the personal prints off the building budgets, because right now, the building budgets pick up those costs.
Right.
And they're going to continue to pick up those costs, so it's kind of hidden, and we would rather it be more exposed, so that they, otherwise, we will never recover and get our costs up.
Mrs. Brzing? Mr. McCaffrey, isn't it true that there will also be a print record of the personal printers too? Cause everything's going to be going through one queue?
Yeah, basically, the queue will be centralized throughout the district. So, for instance, at your, your desktop on your, uh, at your station or your classroom or wherever, you can put it in your queue, in your print queue.
Yeah.
And then you can walk up to any printer, any multi-function printer in the district, hit your card, it brings up your print queue and you choose out of your print queue what you want to print.
Okay.
So, it's centralized, the printing will be centralized to our servers, um, and we will be able to, um, better track, um, where stuff is being printed, uh, who's printing it, um, and can just control costs better.
Right, I think it would avoid, avoid waste.
It'll avoid a lot of waste, cause we have a lot of waste.
Yeah, cause I, I know for sure that there's, you know, there's waste.
Right.
Wherever people can run things up, businesses, schools, et cetera. Great, that's a good idea.
And then at North, as a result of Walk Show One, North is down about nine million copies.
Wow, nine million?
A year.
Right?
So, this will also integrate in with the Walk Show One and the, uh, student devices as well.
Good move.
Yeah, there were a few other, uh, advantages that James Imaging Systems had to offer too in the proposal. They were adding a tech for support. They were increasing their hours, um, starting at seven o'clock, which a lot of our teachers learn by seven and need help. And plus, there was a lot of inventory that they have right in Brookfield so that if, if we do have things that go wrong, they were actually, um, saying that they're going to have extra systems right there for us. So, shouldn't have to wait long when we do have repairs. Any other discussion? So, there's a motion, uh, on the floor to approve James Imaging System to provide the copy print scan devices, um, uh, and related services throughout the district for a period of five years. Sue, will you take the roll call vote?
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzing?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Joseph Cuomo?
Aye. Passes eight zero. Kurt?
Our third, uh, and final action item of the night was approval of cancellation of the, um, local government property insurance fund. The state of Wisconsin has made legislative changes that affect the local government property insurance fund, the most significant being that the fund will be eliminated after 2017. The latest rate increase prompted our broker to seek bids from other insurance companies and discovered we can receive the same or better coverage from Travelers Indemnity Company, an A double, A double plus rated company by AM Best for approximately $8,000 less than the local government property insurance fund premium. Pursuant to the requirements of section sixty, 605.2 and subsection three Wisconsin statutes, a certified notice with board approval is required to withdraw from the local government property insurance fund. The committee approved withdrawal from the local government property insurance fund as our property insurance provider and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Reinacek? Discussion?
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Joseph Cuomo?
Aye. Passes eight zero. Kurt?
Our third, uh, and final action item of the night was approval of cancellation of the, um, local government property insurance fund. The state of Wisconsin has made legislative changes that affect the local government property insurance fund, the most significant being that the fund will be eliminated after 2017. The latest rate increase prompted our broker to seek bids from other insurance companies and discovered we can receive the same or better coverage from Travelers Indemnity Company, an A double, A double plus rated company by AM Best for approximately $8,000 less than the local government property insurance fund premium. Pursuant to the requirements of section sixty, 605.2 and subsection three Wisconsin statutes, a certified notice with board approval is required to withdraw from the local government property insurance fund. The committee approved withdrawal from the local government property insurance fund as our property insurance provider and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Reinacek? Discussion?
I just wanted to say something, uh, that's related to this one and the previous one and to a number of others in our committee meeting earlier tonight. One of the things that was very impressive was the number of applicants we had for these two jobs as well as the number of, uh, people that were going to be signing on as teachers over the month of, during the month of August. And, and asking Chris about that, an overwhelming, it's overwhelming to see how many of them are becoming aware of what's going on in Waukesha in terms of our innovative approach to things, technology and, and, and project based learning and things like that. And they're becoming more and more aware of what we're doing and as such have chosen to come to Waukesha. So, uh, I felt really good was Chris related that story to us. So, I think we should understand that we're doing some stuff right here, some stuff right.
Excellent, thank you, Bill. Other discussion? Mr. Brian?
Is that true, Chris?
[laughing].
Yes, of course it's true. I have a good day today.
Do children bought the new lining or contract?
Don't go there.
We won't go there.
All right, any, any other discussion on, uh, Dennis Griffin as the new principal of Prairie Elementary School? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Joseph Cuomo?
Aye. Passes eight zero. Steve?
Item A two, approval of recommended candidate for the position of principal of Prairie Elementary School. The elementary, the administration is recommending Dennis Griffith for the position of principal of Prairie Elementary School. Mr. Griffin has a high energy level and motivation to lead an elementary school with students' needs first. He has a positive demeanor and connected with the Prairie staff and team right away. His values include a proactive approach to building relationships with staff, students, and parents as a foundation for success. Mr. Griffin was the principal of Cottage Grove School in Monona Grove School District and has accepted a new role as director of special projects there. However, his heart rests with the Waukesha School District and it was the one he applied to. He has been a member of the Woodlands School Board of Education and has taught seventh and eighth grade algebra. Mr. Griffin received his, uh, master science in educational leadership from Cardinal Stritch University in 2014 and his MA in education from Alverna College in 2009. Mr. Griffin has a BA in sociology through Marquette University and is on track to receive his PhD from Cardinal Stritch in 2017. A confidential resume, recommendation and resume were mailed, emailed to you earlier today and a copy was placed on your desk. Salary and benefits will be according to middle management policies. Mr. President, I move to appoint, to approve the appointment of Dennis Griffith for the position of principal of Prairie Elementary School.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Madden? Discussion?
I just wanted to say something, uh, that's related to this one and the previous one and to a number of others in our committee meeting earlier tonight. One of the things that was very impressive was the number of applicants we had for these two jobs as well as the number of, uh, people that were going to be signing on as teachers over the month of, during the month of August. And, and asking Chris about that, an overwhelming, it's overwhelming to see how many of them are becoming aware of what's going on in Waukesha in terms of our innovative approach to things, technology and, and, and project based learning and things like that. And they're becoming more and more aware of what we're doing and as such have chosen to come to Waukesha. So, uh, I felt really good was Chris related that story to us. So, I think we should understand that we're doing some stuff right here, some stuff right.
Excellent, thank you, Bill. Other discussion? Mr. Brian?
Is that true, Chris?
[laughing].
Yes, of course it's true. I have a good day today.
Do children bought the new lining or contract?
Don't go there.
We won't go there.
All right, any, any other discussion on, uh, Dennis Griffin as the new principal of Prairie Elementary School? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Joseph Cuomo?
Aye. Passes eight zero. Steve?
Item A two, approval of recommended candidate for the position of principal of Prairie Elementary School. The elementary, the administration is recommending Dennis Griffith for the position of principal of Prairie Elementary School. Mr. Griffin has a high energy level and motivation to lead an elementary school with students' needs first. He has a positive demeanor and connected with the Prairie staff and team right away. His values include a proactive approach to building relationships with staff, students, and parents as a foundation for success. Mr. Griffin was the principal of Cottage Grove School in Monona Grove School District and has accepted a new role as director of special projects there. However, his heart rests with the Waukesha School District and it was the one he applied to. He has been a member of the Woodlands School Board of Education and has taught seventh and eighth grade algebra. Mr. Griffin received his, uh, master science in educational leadership from Cardinal Stritch University in 2014 and his MA in education from Alverna College in 2009. Mr. Griffin has a BA in sociology through Marquette University and is on track to receive his PhD from Cardinal Stritch in 2017. A confidential resume, recommendation and resume were mailed, emailed to you earlier today and a copy was placed on your desk. Salary and benefits will be according to middle management policies. Mr. President, I move to appoint, to approve the appointment of Dennis Griffith for the position of principal of Prairie Elementary School.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Madden? Discussion?
I just wanted to say something, uh, that's related to this one and the previous one and to a number of others in our committee meeting earlier tonight. One of the things that was very impressive was the number of applicants we had for these two jobs as well as the number of, uh, people that were going to be signing on as teachers over the month of, during the month of August. And, and asking Chris about that, an overwhelming, it's overwhelming to see how many of them are becoming aware of what's going on in Waukesha in terms of our innovative approach to things, technology and, and, and project based learning and things like that. And they're becoming more and more aware of what we're doing and as such have chosen to come to Waukesha. So, uh, I felt really good was Chris related that story to us. So, I think we should understand that we're doing some stuff right here, some stuff right.
Excellent, thank you, Bill. Other discussion? Mr. Brian?
Is that true, Chris?
[laughing].
Yes, of course it's true. I have a good day today.
Do children bought the new lining or contract?
Don't go there.
We won't go there.
All right, any, any other discussion on, uh, Dennis Griffin as the new principal of Prairie Elementary School? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzing?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Joseph Cuomo?
Aye. Passes eight zero. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. President. Item A three, approval of recommended candidate for the position of assistant principal of West High School. The administration is requesting approval for the appointment of Laura Ryan to the position of assistant principal at West High School. The recommendation is based on Ms. Ryan's exemplary work as a teacher leader at West. Ms. Ryan displays commitment and passion through extended time spent at school working with students and teachers. She works to ensure that the instruction received supports the students' learning needs and helps them to not only learn, but to take personal ownership in their learning. She's described as a specialist in identifying the strategies that work with students. Ms. Ryan is reflective in her practice and is confident in her skills, yet she is always looking for new ways to improve. She's a strong collaborator and mentor and respected leader among our faculty. A confidential memo and resume were sent to the board on July 1st, 2015, and a confidential recommendation and resume were placed on your desk. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. Mr. President, I move to approve the appointment of Laura Ryan to the position of assistant principal of West High School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brzing? Discussion? Mr. Brian?
I'm, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, and so that people do know that we do pay attention to things. And we do have a turnover in administrative staff at, at our schools. And, um, sometimes it's because they move on to better things, sometimes they, they decide it's just not right for them. Uh, there's lots of different reasons. Ideally, uh, we'd like to have in all our schools stability and leadership, but at the same time, you want some churn too. And, uh, so we try to, we try to make sure that we put the best people in those positions possible. And we go to a lot of work in trying to find the best people. But even when you go to all that work, sometimes people decide to do something else. And, uh, so we do see turnover at schools and I know there's been quite a bit of turnover at higher, for instance, which is one of the ones we've earlier approved tonight. Um, I'm a believer in the stability if, is, if we can get it. Um, but that doesn't mean we can always get it. And, um, it's a, it's a goal of the district to get stability not only in our leadership, but in our educational staff as a whole. And we're working hard at that.
Mr. Edlund?
I, I also wanted to point out that, you know, particularly in the first two positions that we were filling tonight, um, we had a pool of 90 candidates apply for those positions for administrative positions. So, that gives us, you know, when you talk about a, a management position like that, um, you get to pick and choose who you feel is going to be the best candidate. And it's not like somebody just walks in the door and you're it.
Right.
There is a long review and scoring process of each candidate for the position so that we can ensure in, to the best of our ability, that we've selected the right candidate that would be the best fit, um, for that particular position. And it doesn't always work out, but you do it as a way, uh, to try and, you know, streamline it down to that one candidate. And, you know, we're, we're doing our best in every opportunity that we have such as this. And, um, I'm glad that we've had 90 people still want to work here. Uh, that says a lot for our administrators, our, our top administrators and our superintendent on the, the way that the district is headed.
Other discussion? Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to appoint Laura Ryan to the position of assistant principal at West High School. Sue, will you please take that vote?
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzing?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Steve Edlund?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Joseph Cuomo?
Aye. Passes eight zero. Steve?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Steve. Moving on to our compensation committee that's given by Ms. Madden.
Tonight, we have approval of the 2015-16 supplemental wages for the teacher employee group. A salary schedule is not subjective to negotiation. In fact, it would be a violation of Act 10 to negotiate the schedule with the Education Association of Waukesha. However, using feedback gained from recently conducted stay interviews, administration learned that teachers desire a clear pathway to, er, greater earnings. While each year, the Board of Education has approved base and supplemental salary increases, teachers have been unclear about how additional salary can be earned through meritorious service or performance. In March of 2015, the Board of Education approved the salary schedule with steps and lanes. Recently, the Board has discussed how steps will be awarded and two weeks, weeks ago in an open, s, meeting regarding strategic compensation, Board consensus was sought to approve steps based on satisfactory teacher performance. However, it is important to note that the Board of Education would have to annually approve any fut, future schedule and employment movement or progression on a step or lane. Following its meeting of May 18th, 2015, the compensation committee proposes to provide steps to all eligible teachers based on the 215-216, uh, salary. A copy of that salary schedule was provided in your packets. Mr. President, I move to approve the 2015-2016 supplemental wages for the teacher employee group.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Reinacek? Discussion? Mr. Edlund?
I'm going to support this with reservation. Um, you know, we're in a, we're in an entirely new era and there's nobody that has, uh, the, the perfect model to follow in how compensation